Move our hats.
Call after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Reading and approval of minutes for April 2nd and 10th, equalization. Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve this is kind of reading.
We have a motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, opposed, same side? Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda, you'll notice that 6B is off the list for now.
And 10B was out.
And 10B, case maintenance contract. Anything else that needs to be added or changed? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Hillary for the agenda. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passed. Okay, 5A. 2018 Street Project Update Resolution. Mark? We're getting close.
It's getting very close. The only update I have is that we have a pre-construction meeting set, which some of you are aware of. It'll be Wednesday, May 2nd, 2:00 PM. And we'll be right here in the City Hall. So, whoever of you commissioners would like to attend, come on.
Dave and Monty there too, please. And actually, we should probably have, well, the wire guys will be here. And girl.
It's all we have?
Okay. Are those two track hoes out on the west end of town from?
Kemper.
Oh, they're both at Kemper's?
Yeah.
Alright.
We wanted to get them in here before the other structures.
Okay, we have a resolution for?
What we do as part of the special assessment process, we do have to approve a resolution approving a contractor's bond for the project. And I know Mark stated that it was reviewed and appeared to be in order, so.
Okay. Alright, so we need a motion to approve the resolution, to approve the contractor's bond.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. How much was that again? Remember? Bond? It was five percent, was it 5%?
Is this the bid, which bond is this?
This is the performance bond.
Yeah, that was a percentage, it wasn't, it was like 5% of the project?
The bid bond would have been 5%.
Okay, okay.
Performance should be for the whole amount.
Okay. Not really, I just, nothing to argue, yeah, nothing to argue. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Hillary.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Baldwin, all right.
Aye. Motion, period. 6A, sewer concerns by Archie Rose now. We do have the video, I kind of expected them to be here for this. But even though they're not here, I think we need to talk about it at length and watch the video again. Most of you know that they've been having, in the past several years, numerous backup issues in our house. Which is not fun to deal with, as we all know, but we have, we have had the line videoed. We've had the main clean roots cut out. They put down that, whatever that chemical is into their, to kill things. Archie, we're talking about you, come on in.
Sorry, I'm a little.
You're, you're fine, I'm glad you're here.
Alright.
So, I just started talking about how this has been a numerous year on.
This is the victim's seat.
Weird. This has been a numerous year ongoing issue, and you guys have had several backups, how many, three, four? I don't even know.
Ten over the years.
Okay.
A lot.
Yeah.
Only the last three have involved the main.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I would just mention also that we've had the company Paces, that's coming in camera.
Right.
In the main, we've cut out roots, we poured that chemical down there that's supposed to inhibit the growth.
Right.
We do have the video up here, and we were gonna watch it again, but it, you know, it shows, shows the flow of the water in the main. And then it shows a clean connection to another house nearby you. And then we show, then we can see your.
Right.
Connection too, so there's a, here's a, that was a clean connection. So the main's flowing freely.
Yeah.
And here's where we're gonna see a clean connection, no roots.
Right.
Do you know who this neighborhood process is? No, sorry. Alright. This is 100 and, how many feet?
170 feet from the manhole.
From the manhole, okay.
That would be Doug Robby's.
Okay, okay. And now we're heading, we must be heading south, Sam.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why they.
So that's cracking.
Cracking, yeah.
Dr. Dr. 131.107 to 10 o'clock.
So this is going to be?
Yeah, so this is Archie's connection right here. And that's looking straight up.
There you go.
And that's just full of roots.
And soon, service connection, 146.6, 12 o'clock. Our roots, 146.6, and rate, 11 to 2 o'clock.
Was this just done recently?
No, this was done this past fall, late summer, early fall.
Actually, April 25th, 26th.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So a year ago. You were there, Archie, when, were you out there when they were?
I was watching this, what was being made, yes. It wasn't a happy life, but I would have watched it.
Yeah, I love when people stand. I don't, this is, this continuing south then, down the hill?
Yeah.
So, the main is open. Your connection and your line from the main end looks terrible. Apparently homeowner's responsibility from the connection to the main.
Is the connection to the main?
Is the connection.
Where does it say that?
I don't know where it says that.
Okay, this is what was given to me, right here. Okay, maintenance costs for water, oh, water sewer connection. Wrong paragraph again. Okay, maintenance costs of sewer line service. Once installed, the owner shall be liable for all costs associated with maintenance of the sewer line, from the building to the sewer main. If the maintenance of the line involves excavation, the owner shall be liable for all costs as stated in cost of service lines. Okay, now, my line is clear to the connection, and the roots are in the main. They're not in my line, they're in the main.
I guess, I guess that's not what I just saw. I just saw that the main's running freely.
Right, right.
So your, your water can't get to the main. Your water can't get to the main, because the roots that are between the main and your house.
The roots are coming through at the sewer line, penetration of my line. But the roots are penetrating into the main and causing a problem in the main. If I didn't maintain that, it would cause a problem.
So Archie, have you had it camered from your house?
Yes, in fact, I've had the one, I've had it re-lined.
Sure.
And I spent $10,000 to have my line fixed.
Sure.
Okay? And so that's why I'm here, because I have a substantial amount already invested in this problem. And after I had that line done.
Mm-hmm.
Great, I went ahead and finally finished the basement. Guess what happened?
Yeah. So when they re-lined it, did they tell you how far they got out? Because you can't see, I don't know if we can, that's something to see or not.
Well, the re-line was supposed to be to the.
To the connection.
Connection. So, what I'm saying though, is that there is nothing here that convinces me that it's at least not partially the problem of the main. Because the roots are penetrating into the main. And that's where it's collecting, whatever it's collecting, it's causing the line to back up. Now it is, at this point, only affecting me. But, if this remains the way it is, it's gonna affect everyone.
Yeah, those roots could go all the way.
It will block the main, right. And so, I think we need to come to some sort of compromise on this.
So, part of me says, well, let's dig it up. Well, that's gotta be expensive.
Well, you know, you know what the biggest problem is?
What's that?
It's 13 feet deep down there.
That's, you're right, that is, it's not just shallow, it's, you're right. It is really deep, because of that hill, yeah.
Because that line on the far end is only four feet underground. And if you look at the elevation change, there's that big hill.
Yeah.
And it continues to go through there.
Right.
Crest of the hill.
Right. So I guess, the only real way to find out where are the issue with that, if it's dug up? And if we dig it up and it's not in the main, are you willing to take on that expense?
Well, that depends on what that expense would be.
Okay. Okay, I guess we can.
I would, I would definitely consider a shared situation. But see, and this is what I, okay, and this is my take on this, okay? I pay monthly to have an open main. So we have a contract.
And the main is open.
Well, it's not so far as I am concerned, because it won't be if I don't do something about it. And as of right now, I have a fair amount of money invested in root killer and a variety of other things.
Sure.
Because I'm trying my best not to have another backup to my house. And, and. Go ahead, Archie. Okay, and the result of that is that I'm basically maintaining the sewer line past my place. Because I'm putting all of this chemical in the sewer line. So I already have an investment in this. Besides fixing my line. Now, I have a couple of, I've done some research into this, and I've actually had a thought about something that may or may not actually exist in the world. Although, an original thought nowadays is very hard to come to. And one of the items is that there has got to be somebody out there that can do a type of drill-injection root killer type situation, where it will sterilize the ground around that connection. I don't know that it exists, but the fact that I've thought about it probably means it does. You understand what I'm saying? You ever had an original thought and then thought, oh, well, right, alright. So, that would be one thing. Digging it up might be another thing. Now, there's something that you don't, you all don't know, is that back when they were putting water mains everywhere, they smashed my sewer. And took a chunk out and put one of the big clamp-type.
Connectors.
Connectors. And I believe that at that time, they dislodged that connection.
Okay.
Because originally, when I had this line re-lined, and I had a camera in it and stuff along, the guy who did it was, at that time, Greg's Plumbing, you guys probably know who he is, he did eventually sell out to, well, what's his name? Big plumbing out for that Bismarck, and now he, he runs that portion of their business from. But anyway, he did it all, okay? And he had his camera there, and at that point, there was no root issues in the main.
Mark Sweeney is our city engineer. And Mark, have you heard of anything like this happening? Have you, have you heard of a sterilization product, or another way that we, you know, deal with this, other than digging 13 feet down?
No, I haven't heard of that product. You know, and aside from televising what you have here, and when you were saying that you had your, your service line, I mean, I'd be curious to see what that looks like, because.
You could, you would be able to see the connecting fluid that they attached also on that tele, if you telegraphed.
And now I'm also curious if the lining actually went all the way through. You know, but, but short of that, I don't know what else you can do, aside from digging up.
See, I'm guessing here, Archie, when you ran that chemical through there, it looks like, looks to me like the roots are coming from the top. So you probably screwed it right underneath with that liquid gone through there, and it may not have done much of anything for those roots.
Well, I've used, I've used just about every product I could find, time or another. And then you have a foaming version. But how effective it is, I don't know. I know what it says on the label.
But it's curious that you say that when they were putting the water in, that it may have dislodged that connection, because.
Are you talking back in 93, or 94, when they did the line?
Yeah, whenever, I don't remember the exact year, but it might have been that.
I think that's when it was in Kemper, did that project.
Yeah, but they put a, one of them clamps on there, it had to be 36 inches of it, you know? So they, and they had.
And maybe that came under.
Pitch chunks, you know?
This, this looks like it's coming upon right at the connection point there. Don't you think?
It's clearly, I mean.
Right, well, I understand what's happening. I understand what's happening here. And yes, the connection is the problem.
That's what it looks like to me, I'm not an expert.
What, is there, where, where is that at, and is there a big tree?
Well, there are trees on the boulevard now.
Yeah.
Well, the sewer line is actually, would be on, more on the west side of the street. It's not dead center of the street. Because when, when they did that re-line, he had the locator and everything for all of that, you know? He came and marked it on the screen. I wished I'd have taken a picture of it, because of course, that's long since history.
So on mains, they can roto-root and cut roots out. Can we do that on the, on residential side? Is there a machine small enough to do that, to cut the roots out and?
Well, definitely. How do you think I've been surviving all these years?
So you're using a roto?
I've paid many times. I've done it myself, I've had professionals in, you know?
Well, I think, I think we need to have a, do you have a video of your entire line, Archie?
You know, I do not.
Looks down into the main?
I do not.
That, I think that's the best.
Because what's happened is, I've added scope once since then, okay? And it was a machine that did not do recordings. It wasn't a high-end, it was just a.
Just.
Just a micro-rotting camera, basically, you know? And.
Okay. Well, here's what I'd be willing to do, if it's possible, I'd like to see if Paces could run a camera from his house out. And if we, if it shows that it's, first of all, if we can see that his line all the way out and it's obstructed by a disconnect. A disconnect, or broken pipe, or whatever, and see where the stuff starts and finishes, or, I think that's gonna be the only real way we can figure it out.
Without getting a better look at it, and from my end, exactly.
Because digging it up, we're talking, how many, $10,000, $20,000, I don't, I don't know.
So, well, what is scope again gonna do?
The only permit.
It'll show where the issue is.
But it doesn't matter where the issue is, it needs to be fixed. Either it's Mark's or his, it doesn't matter, really. I mean, it does.
No, no, you're, you're.
It does, but it doesn't.
I'm laughing in agreement.
Because if you're gonna spend that money and scope it, if you're gonna, if you're gonna scope it and spend that money, why not use that money to dig it up and get rid of those roots and fix the problem? And then determine at that point, whose problem it is.
If I, if I was living in Archie's house, I guess I'd wanna know first where it's at, and who's gonna have to pay for it.
Right.
So if it's his responsibility, are you gonna get it fixed?
Well.
I mean.
Do I have some choice?
I mean, if, if we're gonna get it fixed, it's gonna be scoped.
Is I could put a new line in and abandon this one, and that would be a problem, because the tree roots would have been, would block. You know, how expensive are we gonna make this?
Right. And, and I'd like to see how far the re-line goes, Archie, I'm not saying that.
Well, and you know.
Did they get all the way up there?
All I can say is that he measured it at like 93 feet, because it's a long ways up the street from, just because of the way the house is blocked.
Yeah.
And, and that's what he charged me for.
Dave, you have a comment?
Well, that camera said that the root, or the camera's pointing straight up at 12 o'clock. So that means his line is coming in over the main and they draw 90 and dump it down. And when they do a re-line, I don't think their re-lines can make a 90-degree corner.
Well, I think they probably can, because, do you understand how they do that?
Well, they, they have.
It's a, yeah, it's a very clever thing.
Very expensive. To know if, you know, if they line around that 90.
And that's the other thing, Nancy, if we get a camera in there and see that, maybe, maybe that's, the re-line is short. It's a hell of a cheaper to re-line, that'd be gonna make, dig the whole thing up and find.
But you're still gonna have to clean the roots out.
They'll roll it out and then put it through.
Well, when they do the, when they do the line, they have little, it look, you know what an air die grinder is? You know, high speed? And it's got a couple of short sections of something that looks like chainsaw chain attached to it, big propeller, you know? Cleans it right down to, you know, to a bare surface, basically. So that, that's how it was originally done.
I can, I can tell you, my, my home up in Fargo, I had the root problem like that. And until I sold that thing, that, that's what's gonna happen each time that it, it's cheaper for me up there to hire the guy to come in with the cutting wheel and, and trim off of all those roots and stuff like that.
You do it every six months?
I only had to do it once so far, and we, we've been in that house for five years.
I've been in mine for 39.
But I mean, that's, that's the point, Nancy, is, you know?
Well, that's my question is.
It may be that if you scope that in, and it turns out the roots are in Archie's line there, he may choose to just cut them out periodically versus, you know, digging down 13 feet, we'll, we'll full plant repair.
At that point, it would pay more for me to get into the business.
You're right.
You know?
Yeah.
And as it is, I've already checked into the camera thing.
Okay.
And they're about, one, one that'll do a recording is two grand.
Have you checked into what it costs to have someone come do it?
Oh, I know. I'd love contact. It's about $350.
Okay, alright. I think that's where we have to start. I don't know, what does anybody else think? I don't know how else we're gonna see clearly your line, what kind of issues we have all the way out and.
So his, his line dumps from the top, down here.
And the reason was, when the house was built in 63, was they just didn't, they probably didn't even have the equipment to dig that deep. They were, they trenched out as far as they could and probably hand dumped the last little vertical piece of it, you know?
It couldn't be greater than this hole, for all, for all we know.
Well, here, there, there is some evidence that it, that it may reach up into the line a ways. Although, I think, in this picture, if you look right here, you may be seeing the edge of the line, I don't.
That's, that's what I was.
Because it's, it's blue and it's shining, you know?
And like our video shows, you, you can see pretty clearly everything that's in there. So, we should, if we can camera yours, we should be able to see where the lines, re-line stops and starts. We're not gonna see the, we're not gonna see the old connection, because the re-lining's gonna come along.
Right, right. Or right above that.
Yeah, but we should be able to see where the roots are and.
We can speculate.
How far away, maybe you could answer this, is the water line from the sewer line? There's gotta be a, minimum of 10 feet also, minimum of 10 feet. So, it's unlikely that that 10 feet away that's breaking that line dislodged that connection, if it's buried underground. It's clay line, right? Isn't it?
The sewer?
Yeah, in this, and, you know, this is the oldest part of town.
Because they redid it in, back in 93.
Yeah, no, no, they redid the water, sewer. But that's what it is. Okay.
So, do you mind if?
No, no, that's a perfect, that's a perfect solution.
And if it's, if it's down, if it's in ours, then we got some work to do.
Okay. Now, that sounds reasonable to me. We'll diagnose it a little further, and really, the only way is to get a camera look at it.
Yeah.
And the only way to do that without digging it up is by, by running a camera down it again. And, and if my re-line did not go as far as it went, I don't know if, at this point anymore, I have any recourse with a guy that did it. I mean.
Sure.
Although I've had contact with it.
Can you re-line a re-line?
I, I think you can, but see, we're, we're already in the old part of town, we have three-inch lines to begin with. And that takes about a half an inch out of line, because it's about a quarter of an inch thick.
Yeah, that's your, that's the problem, we're gonna reduce so much the area.
So, the fact is that, you know, if it turns out that's the case, I may just make a new connection up, redo my whole sewer line. Which is gonna be a giant.
Cluster.
Yeah, because.
And if it's, if it's in ours, Archie, we gotta, we gotta fix it, and we will. You know, I'd like to do it now, we have a contractor in town this summer.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I did talk to Tim Schwerz about it.
Okay.
Because, according to Casey, he knows this sort of thing, and Casey was thinking he was able to make the connection, because he was qualified to do that. And if you know anybody, it's plenty of applications.
I don't know.
Anyway.
I'm assuming.
Is this not in an area where we're doing work? Just a chip. I don't know where.
We're just doing, yeah, just seal on that street, I think.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually.
No.
Up the street of where we're doing some other sewer work.
You know, where.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, that is chip seal right there, yeah.
Right there, right on that corner, right there, yeah. And, and it's right at the, well, we're on the downhill side of the one hill.
In the west.
Okay. And, and thus, the, the deep line, so. Okay, let's do that, let's get a closer.
And then if you dig it up, that's gonna block up a whole street. So we're gonna, but.
Especially if I'm gonna do it the cheap way and dig it by hand.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Don't underestimate my determination.
Well, the last thing we wanna hear is you got backup in your, in your basement.
Well.
It's, and I know you guys are.
I'll tell you what, I am actually a pro at containing and removing. I, briefly, when I was angry about it, I had a bucket of evidence I was going to break with.
Thank you for not hearing.
Yeah, well, have base roots been cleaned out since last year? The ones that we're seeing now?
Uh, well, when, whenever this, this was taken. Uh, well, when whenever this this was taken was the last time that there was something done about it.
So those, these roots have been cut out then, these have been cut out.
That was.
But I've had a recurrence, because of course, you know, you understand how trees grow, right? That they grow down in the wintertime and up in the summertime, okay, so in the winter is when this happens. You know?
So then now there should be as much growth as?
Well, they'd have to be damn tough at this point, because I've discouraged them as much as I humanly can. Okay, gentlemen, sounds like we have a solution, just contact Casey, you contacting the guy that wants to come do the camera thing.
Well, I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I mean, we, you know, during this year, we're gonna be doing all kinds of other sewer work on these like times, you know? And it's, it's not on the city's dime, you know?
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know. But at least we'll see where where the issue's at and don't if it's our ours, our dime or Archie's dime.
In in the in the meantime, why don't you see if you can't get a number?
It's right here.
Or digging it up.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying, you got a contractor in town doing this work, right? And find out what the addition of doing this would be.
Mark, can you help us with that?
Yeah, sure, I'm just gonna make note of that here. I mean, that would be Kemper.
And if they've already mobilized and stuff, you know.
They're gonna be here all summer, from beginning of May to the end of October.
Or Kemper will.
Or Kemper will, you're right.
They're they're gonna come in for the first whatever, two, three weeks, four weeks, and then once they're done, they're gonna be gone.
Well, what the what does this Kemper?
They're doing the sewer.
They're doing all the sanitary sewer repairs, repairs.
Okay.
And then we have another contractor doing the streets and chip seal and.
Right, right, so Kemper will be the first one.
Well, it's, it sounds like if nothing else, the timing's pretty decent for this.
Yeah.
And if it's something they can work into their, you know, into their schedule or. I'm at, have have you already, have they already bid the work that you've lined out for them?
Okay, that's why I was asking if this was an area that we were working on, because I mean, that would make it.
That'd make it too easy.
Yeah.
But I, you know, like I said, I have no idea what you what you have lined up for them.
Okay.
Well, I'm just.
But they have, they have they have expertise and are probably much better than one of the locals poking around. Because they probably have locating equipment and stuff, because that's the single biggest thing, is find out exactly where it's at.
Yeah.
Well, they do, well, Kemper does televising themselves.
Right.
Do they?
I mean, they have camera equipment.
Right, well, from, yeah, but find it from the surface, you know, as the one that's installed. Because the guy that originated the reline had something like what you guys used to find it like lot markers and that sort of thing. And he had a sender on the end of his of his rotor or machine or his, you know. And that's how it was done then.
Okay.
So, so can you just give me the location like streetwise?
Okay, I live on three, two, two fifth street northwest, but the but the sewer actually runs north and south on Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
Fourth Avenue northwest, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. And I live right on the corner, okay? And uh and the sewer line exits just about dead center from it in the width of my house, out the west wall. For and it moves west, so how far out into the street it goes? Like I say, I wish I had taken a picture or something, or a sewer should be inside of the street, right? Well, it it's actually just a a little bit on the west side of the street, as I remember, but I remember taking note of that when. And if you look at, and if you look at the manholes, there's one right out in front of the house, right, almost in the intersection. And then there's one down at the end of the block, down in front of Charles' house, and it's all on the west side, yes.
Okay.
So if you if you drew a straight line to go, that would locate you east and west, like the north and south.
We we can look at it and come up with like, you know, a ballpark estimate.
That would be a great thing, that would be a really, really great thing.
And then do we contact Paces or Kemper, camera and video it for us, or? I don't know.
Well, Pace would be coming from Montana, right?
Exactly.
And George is in my heart, so.
Okay, okay. Can be told the borough.
And from my end.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to have Kemper doing it, because if he's gonna be the one, you know, fixing it.
Okay.
It would make sense.
Okay, I, since you're the engineer, I got a question for you. How do they seal those connections, how's it done?
How do they seal?
The the physical seal, what does it, what does it amount to?
Well, there's there's a fitting.
And the branch.
It's a fitting, it's a Y fitting that goes in there, and yours is ninety, usually they come off at forty-five. So it's gonna be a solid fitting that goes right there, and then you're gonna have that forty-five coming up, and then your lateral will tie right into that.
Going to house. So actually, we have to cut the main to insert in a Y fitting and with a branch on it?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thanks for coming, and we will stay in contact with you.
Yeah, since Casey was walked away.
Yeah, and he's kinda held captive.
I can see him from. Okay, thank you all.
Yep, thanks. So Ma- Mark or Marty, who's gonna contact Kemper? Do we?
We'll, we'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, as soon as we can, get him out there, do it. Okay.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, we probably do, because we're gonna spend money upfront, and we may hand the bill off to Archie, we may bait ourselves, depending on whose side it is, so. I guess I would like to have a motion to make it uh proper approval to contact him and have him come up with cameras.
So who?
Motion by hack.
I'll second it.
Second by pillar, discussion. So then, so then what we see here, are we kind of like, like leaning toward that this might be our responsibility there? I'm not, I think it's still gonna be his. The, so when it drops down at that at the elbow? From the elbow to the main, is it ours still, or is it still his, it's still his? All thirteen for however far it'll take, I think it's gonna be his expense. So then are we gonna, so now we're gonna scope his? We will scope it, and if it's on his side, he's gonna get the scope bill. If it's on our side and we have to do some, we'll pay for the scope bill and get it get it fixed.
Let's make the motion that way, if we can, or or I'm assuming that's what you were doing, Marty?
Well, maybe you actually have to amend your motion to include that.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Casey, is that the? Well, yeah, I mean, I just don't wanna get. Yeah, we spoke down the road, but I mean, everyone starts running to us and wants us to bring in a contractor to scope their line, you know? I I, so. You know, the penetrations down the line from here, some of them are worse than what.
Oh, really?
That is, yeah, I mean, yeah, and I mean. We're not gonna pay for that, I mean, no, it's gonna be there, you know, some of them, I mean, they just have just a hole, just knocking the side of the pipe, and they get a pipe. Stick it through a hole, hang in there, yeah, that's all it is, but. I agree, I don't wanna set precedents, or we should start cameraing your place, this has just been such an ongoing issue, and I, it's not gonna go away. And I think it's the only way we can resolve it. That's just my opinion.
Hey, want to tell them to amend my first motion?
Got your motion to amend, to make it clear that costs for televising will be based on the location of the blockage. Does that cover it?
Yeah.
Need anymore?
That, does we need to reword differently? In case it is Archie's.
Yes.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, we have amended motion.
Well, you got it, we need to second it.
I'll still second it.
Second by Damon.
And then do I need to remotion? No.
Okay, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
Motion period.
That's on the amendment.
Oh.
You now have to vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. Okay, I need a, oh, okay, roll call. Need more discussion? Roll call on amended motion.
Hack.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi.
Motion period. Alright, building permits for, is that Arles Moss?
Yes.
And then Paul, he's like on shop, I mean, up by Jimmy's.
Okay, that's commercial, yeah.
Yep, Matt's building it, they're already starting to get ready. There was an issue with, is it the water sewer, but we found.
Yeah, we found eight inch sewer line and a six inch water line that runs kinda toward the southwest in that alley. And there was some question as to if that was actually a main, or was it Jimmy's line, but as an eight inch line, it's gotta be a main that was just capped off. Toward the west there, so we're thinking he can make his connections back there, rather than digging into the street. There may be, and Mark has already looked at the area, there may be some issues with drainage on the alleys.
Yeah.
Carlsen tends to bring his building up so that it'll drain toward the street, but then the alley runs north and south and east and west there. There's a pretty good bit of water there right now, so.
So there's a south and east.
South, right behind Jimmy's.
Okay, there's an alley right here, and there's an alley going this way, there's water, so we're back in here.
So so it's going right here.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Got it.
Yep.
So if he raises that up and has it drain towards the east?
He's gonna have his, where his building was setting drain more toward the east, so it goes toward the street to go. To then itself, but there is still issues with the water collecting on the west side where the alley is. Right now, it's a really big money mess.
That's, yeah, huge mess.
So there may be something in our alley that we'll have to look at addressing, some were done, we're gonna give Al's clean up and stuff.
Okay, and there's no variances, it's commercial, so it's kind of straightforward. Alright, we we need a motion to approve this building permit.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion.
Is there a provision in that that he does have to build that west side up and?
I don't believe so, no.
Is he gonna submit plans?
I think this is all the way down.
Yeah, drillings, I think he has an allocation then.
What do you, what's your concern, Mark?
Well, when we looked at it, Monty and I were out there, and the idea was to raise the west side. And then have it all bring to the east, and I'm just thinking, if you don't have any provision for him to do that. Then he can do whatever he wants, and he might make it worse, I think it better, I mean. You're not give, you know, giving him any direction as to what he needs to do to maintain the drainage there.
So that's what was discussed when he came to the city and said there was the need for that, and he said yes, that that's what he would do?
He, yeah, and then Matt's doing the work, and Matt's.
So we'd wanna just put that in, make make it a conditional approval that based, wow.
Well, just that he addresses the drainage.
Just just make sure.
We wanted to drinks, we wanted to drain east, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ideally, yes.
And Jimmy's.
Right.
But I mean, in terms of, in terms of the minutes of the meeting, make sure that it's referenced in there, that it was that it was covered by the board here, that.
The drainage is.
The drainage is, it's to the east, and it would have to be built up to account for that, and that that was part of the discussions with Arles. Before, as as he was submitting his request.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion period. Reports, uh, water sewer. Thank you. Streets, cemetery.
This is like Dave kinda talked about, our sweeper, like that was the only thing that.
It's gonna be used heavily, it looks like.
Yeah, we got a part back from his mark, and they were able to repair it, and they mopped it out some morning, I made it under three hundred dollars, I believe, to repair it.
Oh, it's nice.
I said it was a part eight hundred for buying the one, so.
Okay, so we're ready to roll?
Yeah, we got a couple of. Dirt deflectors we gotta put on first thing in the morning, that we take off in the fall and do leads, so we'll get down on in the morning, and then try to get up tomorrow and.
Yeah.
Try it out.
Dave, last meeting, we talked about the manhole cover, and where are we at with that, I know you and I talked, but for sure.
Tell Free to go ahead and fix it, I can stop there and see how soon he's gonna get out, Archie said he was gonna get out pretty much right away.
And he's explained to the board again what?
He's gonna build a whole new cover assembly or whatever, uh, put on there.
Okay, is there anything else last week?
I don't believe so.
Have you talked to Tim again Schwartz about the sink over by Angie's Park?
Yeah, that's pretty much when we can get out, and if I give like a two day leeway, we can go down, a couple days, you know. It's it's just gotta quit smoking.
Is there still drainage going on over there?
Yeah, with the little bit of smokes and stuff we have, it's.
Yeah.
Kind of just then to go for it.
Here, we, David, I talked, I I told him I'd like to after we get that fixed, go in there. On the west side of the dyke, going south, and get that silt moved out of there.
Silt moved out of there, and then and then where that little road is going into the lift station, let's get some recycling there.
In there.
I just saw last week, Midco was in there, and he was this deep in the mud, I just pissed me off seeing that. Couldn't walk in, God, sorry. Alright, anything else for streets? Okay.
Bill.
Uh, finance busing.
Um, busing did have a committee meeting on Friday, um, we do have another bus driver starting, he did pass his test, so. He will be starting, um, and then the business from the busing is later on the agenda.
Dan, police fire, Forest Street.
Yeah, we received a letter from our chief Stan Burling with regard to pagers. With the volunteer fire department, and they have a number of pagers that are beyond economical repair, and some of the ones that they do have with their staff right now. Are are obsolete, they're no longer provided, and so he has reached out to us, as well as the rural. To acquire five new pagers in the amount of approximately two thousand and fifty dollars. And then that would be split between rural and the city, so we could do the math, it's a thousand twenty-five dollars. But I'd like to, just because I'm not sure if this captures tax and everything else like that. Make a motion that we allow them to acquire five pagers with a not to exceed fifteen hundred dollar expense.
That was your motion? Okay, a motion by pillars.
Second.
Second by hack, discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion period. Dan, anyone else?
That's it.
Alright, HCD busters at uh.
We're at a conference.
Ten A corresponds hundred and one things is due to advertisements. Okay, just have it here.
Right, if you copy some of the last one, we could do the quarter page, full color, same as we did last year, it would be two hundred and five dollars.
I don't think we need to go any bigger, and I think this looks nice. Unless you do anything, so we go beyond over where we're doing. I'd accept the motion.
So moved.
Motion by Keller. Second, second by Hack, or, um, Stern, sorry, discussion? Roll call.
Keller, hi. Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. All right, ten B, pace maintenance contract, we have a copy of that.
Basically this just more or less reserves these prices through December thirty-first where they're coming televising, discussing the other sewer issue, I see they, on their contract for us, don't include anything smaller than a six-inch pipe, so I don't know if we'd have to get different pricing if we were looking at that, but sounds like we're a little Kemper, so. So you accept tomorrow, we need.
Yep. What does you have that? Move to approve the maintenance contract, motion by Casey?
Second.
Second by Jason, discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Keller. Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Eleven A, senior citizen sign.
We just kinda left it up in the air the last time, so I threw it back on there.
Every time I drive, I've driven by there since our last meeting, I just don't understand why they need a sign of that magnitude in front of that building. It's not like people from Mercer, Oliver, Golden Valley, Don't Tell, you're trying to find where the senior citizen center is in Hazen, and that doesn't find it for you anyhow. I have no problem giving a donation, but I'm not gonna say it's a donation for a sign, it's gonna say it's a donation for a senior citizen center, and they can do what they want with it, but I, I, I don't wanna donate to the sign, I, to be honest with you.
And I guess my, my feeling was, I don't wanna tell them how to spend the money.
Right.
But if they're asking for a donation to help buy this, I, I would say no, because I agree with you. It's an expense that I don't know that they can sustain, I mean, they, they've come to us before for money for operational, and then they have all this money and they wanna spend it on a sign, so.
So would you be already designating just a donation and saying, here's a donation, but not saying it's a donation for a sign?
Not this time.
Okay, Jason, you got a comment?
Well, if they can raise twenty thousand, they can raise two thousand more. Uh, I'm not, I'm not flurting, I, 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 you know, you're, I've thought about it too, and I've driven by it. I think they can find an Eagle Scout that's looking for a project, that can make a heck of a nice sign for half the cost, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not.
I gotta tell you that our senior citizen center is pretty awesome.
It is, yeah.
We have a lot of people that use that facility, and, and are, and, and I know there's a lot of communities that don't have something like that that they can go use. And I, I, I regard those people dearly, and that they're, we're lucky, you know, we have a group of people that are willing to use something like that and get after it, and, um, boy, what are you guys' thoughts?
I, my personal feeling on it is that I, I think it's a source of pride for them. It, it's not, it's not a sign to, to let any, well, to, to gather people in and say, here's where the, the senior center is, much like our welcome to Hazen sign, the welcome to Hazen sign doesn't say to people, hey, by the way, you just happened to enter Hazen, I mean, it does sort of, but. So, so I think it's more of a pride thing on, on their part, and as you mentioned earlier, Nancy, I don't think it's our role to tell them how to spend their money. I, I guess I would be, I, I wouldn't have any reservations on making a donation to the senior center for, for them to, to spend with their, with their own discretion, if that's, you know, if they were to make a request on, on that stance.
Casey, how do you feel?
I just think it's great that, I mean, they do wanna, you know, take pride in, in, and it's like what they have and whereas, usually do the work, you know, to get ideas, you know, it's like this, you know, you know, all together, and, uh, I mean, it's over the years, I've seen a lot of projects come, coming us to this board, and, and I mean, I don't think we've really ever said, well, no, we shouldn't.
You're right, you're right.
We shouldn't do this or that, you know, but, you know. You know, I do, I do agree, the price of it's high, I mean, you know.
I feel like they're being raked over the coals.
Yeah, 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 you know, um, yeah, someone else maybe should oversee this and help them, help them, I guess, get the best thing out of their buck, but, you know. I don't think they're gonna find really, I mean, volunteers either, so, yeah.
So we wanna give them a donation, and so how much? It's been about three years since we've given them anything. Now is the health of some American condition, I believe.
Yeah.
Do we have any precedence on, on just general support to Lions, to, you know, other, other entities, just a, a general support?
Not really, not, not the last, you know, other than the limits that are set under our ordinance as to how much we can donate to the way throughout the year.
And it's just a pool of money, it's not a per entity type thing.
You're trying to look at it like that, I mean, I mean, you know, that is city property, you know?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the commerce, uh, commerce center as well, that was, that was our property, and we ended up spending a lot of money there, you know?
You know, their parking lot's nice now, again, last summer we did that, it's.
And it's a beautiful sign.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's gonna do nothing, it's gonna do nothing but better, I think, the, uh, the, the look of our, our town. Expensive, but, but it, it looks really nice.
What would the board like to do?
I'd move to donate, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars to seniors then, for, for his son.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Stern.
I'll second that.
Second by Keller. Discussion. Think we've had most of it. Roll call.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Hack.
Name.
Wolf.
Name.
Over and over.
All right.
Motion carried. But if they ever ask me, I'm just, it's not, we, we should give you a donation, but that's, that's fine. All right, that's done. Outdoor improvements, Monty?
Okay, unfortunately I haven't heard back from one of the contractors. Uh, it was explained to me that when prior contracting looked at that, the condition of the sidewalk that's currently there is getting pretty bad, so his bid did include replacing that sidewalk as well.
That's fine. Okay, well, I think we need to wait, if we don't hear from the other contractor by the next meeting.
The, uh, the cost for square yarders, where what was the second?
Between the two, wasn't it?
Based on the bids, yes.
Okay, all right then.
Generally concern is how far, how long do we go, pretty soon they'll both be so busy, it's gonna be.
I know, you're right, I agree, yeah, someone must take action on it, that's fine.
I will make the motion that we accept the price.
Okay.
Estimate.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Hack.
Right.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Twelve A, bus operations policy, bus grant approval.
Um, everyone should have got a copy of the operations policy for Leonard Muffin, and those in yellow are the changes that they, we wanna make to the operations policy.
Is it, was that just added, or was it reworded?
The, the only part in number two, it was reworded to include the workforce safety classes that we do quarterly online.
As an alternative?
Yeah, and then with regard to number five, there had been some concerns with the audio equipment and the ability to hear students on the bus, so that was added. And with regard to number nine, there is some, basically it's just a matter of making sure that it's clear that it is the responsibility of the drivers as part of their power, the operations, to maintain the cleanliness and safety of those buses to their, their ability.
So I make a motion that we accept these policy changes?
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to accept the haze of busing operation policy changes. I'm sorry.
Oh, until you.
Okay. Second, second by Stern, discussion?
Is there any effective date for these?
It's basically upon approval.
Is that how they generally, oh.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Sorry.
No, that's good, what'd you say?
I said we could set one easy up. At least there'd be a clear delineation as to when these.
Well, it looks like we probably want to get these going as soon as possible.
We set tomorrow as a date?
Absolutely.
At seven fifty-nine. Damn, yeah.
Any more discussion?
It's probably in the lower, the lower case, number nine, left there, it says that, you know, the, you know, I guess the month and the year there, so, I mean.
Yeah, that will be updated.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. And twelve B, pager replacement, fire department, we got it done, huh?
Just a second.
We've still got the grant.
Oh, we got the busing grant. Is that the rural public transit?
Yeah.
We may have to make some minor changes to the budget based on what kind of funding is actually awarded, once that's determined. So, you know, we may have, like I say, we may have to come back later and just make some adjustments, amendments to that budget. But that's the amounts we're requesting right now, is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars for operating, and twelve thousand, three hundred and twenty-three for the administration. Operating is fifty-fifty, grants administration is eighty-twenty.
Okay. And we need a motion to accept, or to approve this, or not, we, we wait till we get back?
Well, if you would approve it, because it has to be submitted by me first.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Wolf to approve, all right?
I'll second that.
Second by Keller, discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carried. Approve the bills.
There's a couple more on your table.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion? Roll call.
Hack.
Right.
Stern.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
All right, motion carries, media adjourned.